Well, it's a Wednesday night and it's seven o'clock, so it's time to start our Advent Study this evening. This will be our last study for a couple of weeks, the last night of our study, because we're going to take a break here for Christmas. And I hope you enjoy having the break and have an awesome Christmas. Let me give just a couple of announcements as we get started. You may notice that the lighting here in my study looks just a little bit different tonight. I had some, a light fixture go out, and so I've kind of improvised with a reading light. And hope to get that light replaced after the holidays. We had, we had a really special mission opportunity this last, I guess that was on Monday morning. We decided whenever we were looking for people to do angels for, we went to the Patent Towers and talked with them. And they commented that people there could really use some help. And so Lindsay and the mission folks decided, let's do something focused on Patent Towers. That's low-income housing right in downtown Chattanooga. It's on the corner of Market and Georgia and 11th. And I don't know if you all know, but it had a really bad fire there a year or so ago. And so they had to vacate it and refurbish it after the fire. Actually, it had been refurbished and then caught on fire and it had to be done all over again. But the mission team took money from Christ Church's mission budget and bought material for gift bags for all the people there, 200-plus residents. And in the bags were laundry detergent, toiletries, a really nice blanket. It was really good stuff that was in these bags. And the mission team packed all those bags up. And on Monday morning, Becky had announced that instead of having a staff meeting Monday, she'd like as many members of the staff as could go down and help distribute these gifts to Patent Towers. And that was really a neat experience. This was some hard work. We cranked up and delivered all of them, 11 floors. And some of the people told us, this is the first Christmas gift I've had, one lady said, in 12 years. One lady asked me to pray for her. One lady brought a devotional guide to the door and read a devotion to the people. So who brought the bags to her door? It was a good experience. You all know that we're going to have two Christmas Eve candlelight services at three o'clock, one in the commons, one in the sanctuary. Then there'll be two at five o'clock, one in the commons, one in the sanctuary. So four candlelight services on Friday. Just take the time and one that seems to fit you best. And then this is really important, on this coming Sunday, December 26th, and the following Sunday, which is the Sunday after New Year's Day, January 2nd, we will be having one service those Sunday mornings. It'll be 10 o'clock and it will be in the sanctuary. And that's an awesome opportunity to hear all our worship styles together. The worship teams will work together and provide blended music on those two Sundays, 10 o'clock. We tonight finish up with our Advent Study. And we started with the prophets. And we talked about how they promised the coming of a Messiah, the Prince of Peace. Then we studied about an angel visiting Zechariah, the priest, and his wife Elizabeth, and told them they would have a son that would be John the Baptist. Then last week, you need to answer a question for me. Who did the angel visit? We had, you know, the angel had visited Zechariah. And then last week, we studied about the angel Gabriel visiting two people and with a very different message to each of those people. Who did the angel visit? Was the angel Gabriel? And it seems like anytime an angel visits people, the first thing the angel says is, "Do not be afraid." Okay, I see a J pop up there. I think that means Joseph, and that is the right answer. Joseph got the second visit. The first visit was to Mary. Thank you, Lynn. I was right. That's what Lynn was starting to type in. The angel visited Mary and told Mary, "You are blessed among women." And then went on to give her kind of a scary message that says, "You're going to bring forth a son and he'll be born by the Holy Spirit. And you'll be a great king. His lineage will never end. He'll be born in the house of David." And I think all Mary heard was, "Womp, womp, 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 and you're going to have a baby." Womp, womp, womp. That was, she says, "How can this be? I'm a virgin." And so the angel explained to her that she would conceive by the Holy Spirit. Lynn says Joseph, and absolutely true. You remember what the angel told Joseph? Joseph's message came after Joseph learned that Mary was expecting a baby. And they were pledged to be married, which means they had done kind of half of the marriage ceremony. It was more than our being engaged today. It was more than exchanging a ring. It was a legally binding ceremony in which she had been pledged to him. And now Joseph had found out that Mary was great with child and, or at least expecting a child. And he had decided, I'm waiting for you to tell me what the angel told Joseph. But Joseph had decided, okay, I've got two choices here. I either embarrass her, I publicly bring this up, which could have her stoned. Told Joseph not to be afraid to take Mary as his wife. Exactly. Joseph wasn't even thinking about that one. He was trying to decide, do I put her away quietly? Or do I publicly disgrace her and perhaps have her stoned? And now he's been given another option. So the stage is set for our study tonight. I'm going to read the Christmas story out of Luke. And this is the most familiar story that we hear read at Christmas. "In those days Caesar Augustus issued a decree that a census should be taken of the entire Roman world. This was the first census that took place while Corinius was governor of Syria. And everyone went to their own town to register. So Joseph also went up from the town of Nazareth in Galilee to Judea to Bethlehem, the town of David, because he belonged to the house and line of David. He went there to register with Mary, who was pledged to be married to him and was expecting a child. While they were there, the time came for the baby to be born, and she gave birth to her firstborn, a son. She wrapped him in cloths and placed him in a manger, because there was no guest room available for them." Notice how the wording is a little different? Instead of saying, "No room in the inn, no guest room available to them." How does Luke date what he just told us about? In those times, the Roman calendars were just being created. In fact, it wasn't, a calendar wasn't available to Luke. He couldn't say, well, it was on, it really wasn't December 25th. We don't know exactly when the birth took place, in the year AD 7 or AD 4 or whatever. Instead, how does he, how does Luke date this? He does the best job he can to put it in the context of time and tell us when these events took place. He did what historians would typically do there whenever they were putting something in the context of time, so people reading it later could look back and say, okay, so this had to have taken place about in this period of time. He tells us who the rulers were. Corinius was governor of Syria. And Augustus was the emperor of Rome. Caesar Augustus had put out a decree that everyone should go to their home village. When the Romans took a census of people they governed, especially when people were nomadic people like the people in Israel, it was hard to count people, because a family would be here and then they're there, then they're here. And so the rule was, everybody go to your hometown. In other words, where your tribe came from, in their case, go where David, your ancestor was, which is Bethlehem, and just stay there until the census is over. Not just until you're counted, but stay there until the census was over. And so they were told, go to Bethlehem. That's the city of David. It wouldn't have been an easy trip. It was a trip of about 80 miles. I found it interesting that it says they had to go up to Judea. There's a, Mount Zion is, leads up to Jerusalem. But they really don't go up to Judea geographically. We always say, you go down south, right? If we're going, if I go to Atlanta quite a bit, I always say, I'll run down to Atlanta. Our daughter and her husband come up to Chattanooga. That's not because of elevation, that's because looking at a map, north is up. Well, Judea was south, and so it would have, it seemed natural to say they went down to Judea. But you always went up when you're going toward Jerusalem. They looked at it like Jerusalem, Judea was where God resided, and so they would say, go up. There was a reason for the Israelites to have to go to their home city to be counted. In other words, the Romans weren't taking the census just out of curiosity. They did it for two reasons. The first was to decide to determine how many young males there were who could be used, conscripted into the Roman army. In the case of Israel, for some reason, they exempted the Israelites. They knew from a religious standpoint, the Israelites didn't think they should fight for another king. And so they exempted them. But the other reason was to figure taxes. And so they would, they would count the population, know how many people were there, and then from that, they would estimate the taxes and tell the tax collectors how much to collect. So people went on this pilgrimage not very happy. You were being told by a ruling military power to go a long distance. In Joseph and Mary's case, 80 miles, to be counted. You were being treated like, kind of like animals. We don't know how they traveled, whether they walked. The Christmas cards always have Mary riding on a donkey and Joseph kind of leading the donkey. That's a likely way that it happened, but we don't know that. History tells us that the second, I'm sorry, the second census taken under the rule of Corinius, it says, this is the first one. The second one tells us, Israelites were so upset by the census that they rioted. In other words, they tried to refuse it. But in this case, Joseph probably wasn't happy, but he obeyed. And so he went to Bethlehem. Luke tells us that Mary wrapped him in cloths. Somebody tell me, in the King James Version, it says, "Wrapped him in swaddling cloths." Somebody tell me what those cloths were intended to do? Why would Mary wrap this baby in quote, "swaddling cloths"? And while I'm waiting for that question to get out there and your answer to get back, I'm going to keep on yapping. A swaddling cloth looked like, kind of like a kite. It was sort of a square-shaped piece of fabric. And from one corner was a little bit like the tail of the kite. There was a long strip of material. And so the mother would take the newborn baby, wrap it with that square of cloth, kind of folding the corners in. And then she would take that long strip of cloth and literally wind it around the baby and bind the baby up really nice and snug. Okay, I see a request for prayer request, and I will certainly take note of that and be praying for you, Victoria. Thank you for that prayer request. And I'll look back at it. It's kind of a long request. I'll look back at it after our session tonight. So why did, why did Mary wrap the baby? Why would any mother wrap the baby in a swaddling cloth? Anybody know? Well, there were a couple of reasons. One was simply for warmth. And that's the one that we, I see Dick Gordon just joined us. One is for warmth. You wrap the cloth, we don't know exactly what the stable was like. I just said, "Stable." Swaddled for warmth and comfort, absolutely. But they're probably, there's probably a fire close by. These are cruel conditions. And so the baby's wrapped for warmth and for comfort. There was a belief at that time that when the baby came out of the womb, if you didn't wrap it up pretty snugly, its organs could be damaged, its internal organs. The thinking was that it had been in this womb in a snug place for nine months, and now suddenly it's free, and that's not a good thing, that it needed to be swaddled, bundled up tightly. And then those cloths loosened over time, so the baby adjusted to its new environment. But the warmth would be important, the comfort would be important. This baby being placed in a manger tells us a couple of things. And it says, "She wrapped him in cloths and placed him in a manger." A manger's a trough that animals are fed in, grain, corn, barley, whatever they're being fed. And all that tells us is this is a place where animals were kept. There's been a lot of speculation about this. Becky came home from church one day and said, "David, could you build me something? We need it for," I forgot if it was the family worship service for the candlelight service. This was a few years ago. And I said, "Sure, what do you need me to build?" And she goes, "A creche." A creche? Wow. And I'm thinking, a creche is like a stable? And Becky goes, "No, I'm talking about a manger." So, you know, that was easy to build, a little box with crossed legs. And, but we usually think of the, we usually think of the stable, the place where this baby was born, as a wooden structure. We see those a lot of times in nativity sets. If you go to Bethlehem and go to the Church of the Nativity, traditionally, at least it's told, we're told when we go there, that that church was built over the spot where Christ was born. And so if you go down in the basement of the church and you go down a long tunnel and that's been kind of excavated in the rock, you come to a cave. And it's very logical that the stable actually was a cave. A lot of animals were kept in caves. And even there, there's a stone floor in that cave, and there's a mini-pointed star made out of silver that years and years ago, centuries ago, somebody placed there and said it was the very place in which the manger sat. We don't know that. But it very well could have been a cave. I did some reading in the commentary about stables and the way animals were kept in those days. It's interesting that oftentimes, what we would call a hotel or a motel, what they would call an inn, was built as a courtyard. So there was a center courtyard and animals were kept in the courtyard. And then guests were up on the second floor, kind of above the animals. So if it were in an inn, some translations say there was no room in the inn. It may have been, there was no place for them on the second floor or the third floor. But down on the courtyard, on the ground floor that was open, where the animals were kept, that's where the baby was born. You could have a fire down there. Anyhow, it's just, it's interesting. No room in the inn lets us know this child came into a world that wasn't really ready for him. And so, let me catch up with my notes here. I'm going to read on to verse 8 through 14. I'm in chapter two, continuing the birth story. "And there were shepherds living out in the fields nearby, keeping watch over their flocks at night. An angel of the Lord appeared to them, and the glory of the Lord shone around them, and they were terrified. Remember, everybody that the angels appeared to seemed to be terrified or afraid. Zechariah, Mary, Joseph, the angel said, 'Don't be afraid.' And so the shepherds are afraid. But the angel said to them, 'Do not be afraid. I bring you good news that will cause great joy for all the people. Today in the town of David a Savior has been born to you. He is the Messiah, the Lord. This will be assigned to you. You will find a baby wrapped in cloths and lying in a manger. Suddenly a great company of the heavenly hosts appeared with the angel, praising God and saying, 'Glory to God in the highest heaven, and on earth peace to those on whom his favor rests.'" The words are different here than in the King James Version, but so many of us have heard this story read in church or Sunday School, even in school programs when we were kids. "I bring you good news of great joy, for unto you this day a Savior is born." The King James says it so beautifully. This announcement of God's Son to the world, the angels coming, announcing to the shepherds that God's Son, the Messiah, has come to earth, is both exclusive and inclusive. And you say, "What? Exclusive?" It's meant for everyone, and that's the inclusive part. But here's why it's exclusive. The angel did not, the angel did not go to Jerusalem. The angel did not go to Herod's palace. That's where a king is usually born, right? It's where a prince is born. The angel didn't go there. The angel didn't go to wealthy people. The angel didn't go to the temple. You might think, well, this is God's Son. That would be announced in the Most Holy Place, the place where the Israelites felt like God resided. And so in a way, it's exclusive. It did not go to where we would expect it to go. I remember being in South Sudan preaching one time on how Christ came, not preaching, but teaching pastors about how God came for everyone. And those pastors let me know, no, God came for us. God came for the poor. God came for them, Christ came for the marginalized. And I said, "Well, didn't Christ come for me too?" And he's, "Yeah, you're wealthy. You come from a powerful, wealthy nation. And Christ is a champion of the poor and the outcast." I didn't debate with them. I said, "Well, would you share Him with me?" And they laughed and clapped and said, "Yes, you can have Him too. He came for everyone." But the focus is exclusively against those in power. It's inclusive in that it came indeed, the baby was announced first to shepherds. Poor guys, men, they were, they were almost like homeless people. They worked for meager wages. They were always touching animals, sometimes dead animals. They were often ceremonially unclean. They would, they would have been outcasts in their society. They didn't smell good. You know, they had a rough life. They didn't own the sheep. They worked for meager wages. And it was to them, shepherds out in a field, that the angel came. And then a whole host of angels announced this. But it says, this is the inclusive part. The shepherds are included. In other words, marginalized are included. But then it says, "A Savior has been born to you. This will be a sign wrapped, and the peace to those on whom his favor rests." That's a little different than the King James. It says, "To all mankind," or "to all men." But it, that's the meaning. Christ has come to all, all people. This child is for all. So Luke's account tells us that there's a whole host of angels that are singing. I just can't imagine what that would have been like for those shepherds out on a frost-covered hill in the wintertime and hearing this host of angels. Let's see what they do. We're going to pick up at 2:15 and read to 2:20. "When the angels had left them and gone into heaven, the shepherds said to one another, 'Let's go to Bethlehem and see this thing that has happened, which the Lord has told us about.'" By the way, I did the narration. I was fortunate to be asked to do the narration for this year's Christmas presentation, the musical, "One of Us." And these words of Scripture were included in my narration. It was, it was so beautiful to read this and then to hear the choir sing so beautifully and the music tell this story in song and music. If you haven't watched that, "One of Us," go to our website, www.christchurchchat, with two Ts, and there's a banner on the homepage. And I think it's the first slide on the banner. If you click on that, it says, "One of Us." Watch again. You can click on the "Read More" there and then click on it. And it's like a one-hour beautiful musical presentation of Christ coming as one of us. I would recommend it. It says, "So they hurried off and found Mary and Joseph and the baby, who was lying in the manger. When they had seen him, they spread the word concerning what had been told about this child." I'm going to ask you a question. And I'm going to keep reading, but you be thinking about it as I finish reading. Here's my question. What do the shepherds do? What is their response to the Christ child? "When they had seen him, they spread the word concerning what had been told about this child. And all who heard it were amazed at what the shepherds said to them. But Mary treasured up all these things and pondered them in her heart. The shepherds returned, glorifying and praising God for all the things they had heard and seen, which were just as they had been told." So answer my question, please. What did the, what did the shepherds do in response to finding the baby in the manger? And by the way, that's another reason, or maybe just saying, having the baby lying in a manger was weird. And so this was a sign when the angels, when the angels told them about it, the shepherds, there's no mistaking this. This is the only baby in Bethlehem lying in a manger. Yeah, they glorified God and went out to tell everyone what they saw. Two major things there. Number one, they worshiped. They glorified God, they praised God, they give credit to God. These shepherds got it. They understood, this is a wonderful thing and we're to celebrate and praise God. And number two, as Lynn says, they went out and told everyone what they had seen. They were witnesses. We're all called to do that. Worship, praise God, give thanks. But then, don't keep it to ourselves. Go out and tell others. Tell others what Christ is doing in our lives. We don't see Christ in the manger, but we see Christ active and doing things in the world all the time. There are people who need to hear that. Don't want to slip into preaching here, but, "Angels and hosts had appeared to the shepherds, but notice who they say in verse 15 has told them about these things. The shepherds say, 'The Lord.'" The Lord has told us, verse 15, I mean, look again. "Let's go to Bethlehem and see this thing that has happened, which the Lord has told us about." In other words, they knew that the angels came from God. "Lord" and "God" here are being used interchangeably. The shepherds called God the Lord, and the angels had announced that the baby is Christ the Lord. You see what's happening here? Christ the Son and God the Father are being used, the same name. "Lord" is being used for them. We're starting to see, of course, we know this, but this is part of the Trinity. The Son and the Father are different parts of the same God, the Trinity. As the shepherds returned to their work, they're worshiping, they're witnessing, and this made the announcement totally inclusive. There's no exclusivity in this at all. I said on the beginning, coming to them kind of left out the wealthy and the powerful and the highly religious. But now those shepherds are telling everyone they run into. And that's the way it's supposed to be. No one is to be left out. I love that verse that says, "Mary treasured these things and pondered them in her heart." What does that mean? "Mary treasured these things and she pondered them in her heart." This is a, this shows up two or three times. I think it's twice here and later on, after they've been to the temple. She sees these things and it's like, whoa. She treasures them and then she ponders them in her heart. By the way, all these things that she's treasuring in her heart, think about them. Virgin birth, conceived by the Holy Spirit. Shepherds coming and saying, "Angels came and told us that our Lord was here, having a baby that an angel, Gabriel, has told you will be an everlasting king, coming from the throne of David." She must have felt so humbled, Lynn says, and honored to have been chosen to be Jesus's mother. Absolutely. And at the same time, she is saying, "Oh, my gosh. This is so beautiful." oh my gosh, this is so beautiful. Yeah, humbled, honored. She treasures it. This is a beautiful thing. The fact that she ponders it says she's trying to figure it out. She's thinking about it. When we ponder things, we think about it and we say, what could this mean? And I think this tells us something else. How would we know that Mary treasured these things and pondered them in her heart? How would Luke? Okay. Luke was inspired by the Holy Spirit and God could simply have just told Luke this. But I have another theory and it's not my original theory. I read it in, in some commentaries. It's very likely that Luke interviewed Mary. Luke traveled with Paul. They went to Ephesus. Church tradition says that John the Apostle took Mary to live in Ephesus. And that is where she eventually passed away. Wouldn't it have been beautiful if Luke, knowing that Mary was in Ephesus, when he was there with Paul, went and sat with her? And she said, you know, I treasured all those things and I kept thinking about it. I kept trying to figure out what it could mean. It's just, it's a kind of thing that are, that someone kind of reporting might have said. Luke continues on in chapter two, letting us see how Joseph and Mary are gonna raise Jesus in the customs of the Jewish faith. On the eighth day, they take him to the temple to be circumcised. It was there that his name would be announced publicly. After forty days, it was time for Mary's purification and for Jesus's redemption at the temple. A redemption is, is a, it's a sacrifice that you give because this is your firstborn son. And they belong to God and so, uh, you redeemed them. Yes, and, and Mary's, Lynn's right. She's gonna be willing to slip back and let Christ take the forefront here. They, they go to the temple. They offer the sacrifice, two turtle doves, two birds that are the, the sacrifice that you could do if you couldn't afford a ram or a, or a lamb. Which lets us know they're, they're poor working class people. No shame, no shame in that. But they do their offering and, uh, completed the rituals. Do you remember who it was they ran into when they went into the temple? There were two people who were in the temple and those two people were kind of highly religious people that hung out at the temple. One was an old gentleman named Simeon. And when Mary and Joseph came into the temple court where Simeon was, he came over and said, thank you, Simeon, exactly. And, uh, there was one more person there. Simeon took the child in his arms and said, I've been told that I would not die until I saw the Christ. Here he is. And he, it's like he sings this song called Non Domitus. That's Latin for now dismiss. And what Simeon is saying is, and Anna, thank you very much. Simeon is saying, now I've seen my Lord, so you can dismiss me. You can, you can let me pass away and, and I will have, you will have fulfilled your promise to me. Anna was a prophetess, meaning she, she got messages from God. She gave them to the people. She stayed in the temple courts. And when she sees the baby, she prophesies that this is the one who will redeem Israel. But then she says something that must have made Mary sad and wonder. She says, and a sword will pierce your heart also. She's saying to Mary, this human life will end tragically. Just another one of those things that Mary is gonna treasure and ponder in her heart. Then Luke says that Joseph took Mary and Jesus home to Nazareth. Now I'm gonna flip back to Matthew. We, we put those two gospels together to get the Christmas story. And I'm gonna go back to Matthew, chapter two. That's where we read about Joseph and, uh, the angel visiting Joseph, but we ended at the end of chapter one. The end of chapter one says, but he, Joseph, did not consummate their marriage until she gave birth to a son and he gave him the name Jesus. Boom. No mention of a manger, no mention of shepherds. But there's a mention of some other people. After Jesus was born in Bethlehem in Judea during the time of King Herod, see, Matthew is helping date this as well. He just told us who the king was. King Herod, Magi, we sometimes call them wise men. From the east came to Jerusalem and asked, where is the one who has been born king of the Jews? We saw his star when it rose and have come to worship him. When King Herod heard this, he was disturbed and all Jerusalem with him. When he had called together all the people's chief priests and teachers of the law, he asked them where the Messiah was to be born. In Bethlehem in Judea, they replied, for this is what the prophet has written and this is from the prophet Micah. But you Bethlehem in the land of Judah are by no means least among the rulers of Judah. For out of you will come a ruler who will shepherd my people, Israel. You see, the religious people look back at the prophecies and say, ah, he'll be born in Bethlehem. Then Herod called the Magi secretly and found out from them the exact time the star had appeared. He sent them to Bethlehem and said, go and search carefully for the child. A lot of translations say diligently. And when I'm reading, it's oftentimes if I've, it's like I'll say the word diligently from the other translation. NIV says carefully, same meaning. As soon as you find him, report to me so that I too may go and worship him. Uh, that's not at all what Herod wants to do. But, uh, there's some, there's some details that we kind of fill in. They're not given to us. How many wise men were there? How many Magi? By the way, Magi, we don't know exactly where they come from. They, they could have been from China as far as that goes. They could have been from India. But, um, that would have been a long, long, long journey. A lot of people say they were from Persia. There were Zoroastrians, people who, who were known as Magi in Persia. Uh, the old remains of the Persian Empire who were astrologers uh, and, and, uh, who studied the stars, thinking that they predicted things that were happening on earth. All around the world. At that time, there was a, there was an excitement that, um, a new king would be born and this would be a different king. This king would rule even beyond the Roman Empire. Well, they were right. It was gonna be a different kind of kingdom. Jesus said, my kingdom is not of this earth. And so these guys seeing the star and it was a lot of astronomers, not astrologers, but a lot of astronomers today have theories about what was happening in the universe then. An alignment of a, of a planet and a, and a constellation that would have given a really huge bright star. The Lord tells us there were three, but no one knows exactly how many there were. Thank you. The reason that tradition says there were three is because of the three gifts. And so we, you know, all of us, I've seen little Christmas programs or nativities where there's a wise man, one holding gold, one holding frankincense, one holding myrrh. Uh, and, and so we, we, uh, we assumed there were three. Because they came from the east and they traveled a great distance, we assume they traveled by camel. We don't know. We know they didn't travel by, by plane, train or automobile. And it's very likely that they traveled by camel. But we've seized on that and, and it's, it's fine. We've even given them names. They would, they would go to Jerusalem very naturally. You see what's happening? The star, when you're in, uh, let's say you're in Persia, which is like modern Iraq. A star in the west would take you to pretty close to where the star is. But then when you get closer and closer and closer, well, that star is over a lot of country. And so you would assume, well, a new king, a prince would be born in the palace. It would be born to the current king because that's the way it works. And so they went to, they went to Jerusalem where King Herod lived. And they ask and the, and the religious people said, well, it's gonna be in Bethlehem. Herod is disturbed. He is insanely jealous. Herod had a son-in-law killed. He had a son or two killed because they, he, he was afraid they would take his throne before he was finished with it. He was insanely jealous. I'm gonna pick up and read now verses nine through twelve. After they heard the king, they went on their way and the star they had seen when it rose went ahead of them until it stopped over the place where the child was. When they saw the star, they were overjoyed. On coming to the house, they saw the child with his mother Mary and they bowed down and worshipped him. Then they opened their treasures and presented with him those three gifts, gold, frankincense and myrrh. And having been warned in a dream not to go back to Herod, they returned to their country by another route. I preached the, the sermon, the Sunday after Christmas a couple of years ago and used that title, Home by Another Route. And talked about how sometimes we're sent on a different direction than we had intended to go. They went because God sent them a message. It says, don't, don't go back until Herod. And that, the Magi, uh, probably saved his life by doing that. We, if we read on in the story, we learn that Joseph, takes the baby and the mother and takes them down south to Egypt, to the southwest, out of the country, so Herod can't get to them. Those gifts we, oh, notice also, there's no mention of a manger. There's no mention of a stable. It's very likely that the wise men came much later than the shepherds came. They're staying in a house now. It's interesting that in our nativity sets, we have, there's Mary and Joseph and the baby and there's shepherds and shepherds are usually carrying a lamb or two and, and, uh, there's usually a cow and a, and a few animals, maybe a donkey or, or so around the nativity, but they're the wise men. It's as if the Magi showed up on the same night as, uh, as the, as the shepherds. Not very likely. Doesn't matter. Uh, they help us to see the full story whenever we see the whole collection together. The gifts have some symbolic meaning. Gold is something that's fit for a king. Jesus was a king. He's the Christ. Frankincense is something that priests used when they burned incense. It was a special kind of incense at the temple. Jesus indeed was a bridge, a priest between us and the Father. And finally myrrh. Myrrh was a very expensive, uh, thank you, Lynn says, maybe as many as three years after the birth. That, that's exactly right. Uh, whenever the King Herod asked, when did you see the star appear? And they told him, well, so many months ago. He had all the babies that had been born, I believe it was two years and younger, put to death. So he's, uh, it, it was sometime after the shepherds that the wise men came. There's no doubt about that. Thanks Lynn. Uh, I was talking about those gifts. The myrrh is a, it's, it's a spice, a rosin that was used as part of those spices for preparing someone for burial. So you see that symbolism, uh, uh, Joseph of Aaron, Mathias, Nicodemus hurriedly prepared Christ's body. Myrrh would have, after the crucifixion, myrrh would have been one of the expensive spices, uh, rosin's that they would have used in doing that. Those gifts were very symbolic. And so, Joseph takes his family and goes to Egypt. And later on, Matthew is going to say, this was also to help us to understand what Hosea meant, the prophet, when he said, out of Egypt I have called my son, because eventually it was safe and Joseph could take Jesus and Mary and go home to Nazareth where Jesus grew uh, in, in size, stature and in wisdom, we're told. Well, we have completed our Advent study and that is the Christmas story. We always conclude Advent with Christmas. I am so excited about the coming of Christmas. Christmas Eve is Friday. Christmas Day on Saturday. I hope you can come to church on, uh, on Sunday, the twenty sixth. And we're gonna feel like we've done a lot of church, but that'll be a beautiful blended, uh, worship service at ten o'clock in the sanctuary this Sunday. I hope you can come and be part of it. If you can't come, tune in and watch it online, Facebook Live or a live stream. I don't know what I'm gonna be doing after the first of the year. We don't know if we're gonna be able to do community cafe in person or if we'll be doing it to go. And so I'm just gonna have to wait and see. I may do a, uh, a hybrid class. Don't, just don't know what I'll be doing. So if you don't mind, watch the newsletter, watch the worship announcements, watch what's, uh, online and I'll get the word out. Uh, if I'm gonna be doing a Wednesday night study or if I'll be doing something in person there at the Church with Community Cafe. Thank you Lynn. I have enjoyed having, uh, each of you on and I, I'm always having people, someone uh, came up to me. I was doing visitation at the funeral home today and, and someone came up and said, I enjoy your study online. I never get to watch it live, but I enjoy seeing it later. Uh, and so I'm, I'm blessed when I hear that. Hope, uh, you've enjoyed it. I've certainly enjoyed doing it. And, uh, so now God bless and have a very, very merry Christmas.